You would be under item 10 on schedule of audience participation.
This is on the agenda, right? Your board.
Yep, so we could just wait, so yes.
For your agenda, it says to fill out the card. No, I'm on hold. I wanted to address number 5 and 9. I did.
Okay, so at this point, we're gonna move on to item number 5. Jill Mon, the Lighthouse Connections Academy.
Hi, I'm going to be short and straight in. I wanted you to know in your board packets, when we're dealing with the Lighthouse Connections Academy, that's our cyber school. And some of their paperwork, there was a mismatch. It said, "Michiganers for Quality Virtual Education" is the name of their nonprofit. And some of it did not use the word "virtual." So they have decided as their own board to remove the word "virtual" from their nonprofit name. And so we have a new certificate of assumed name for us to execute along with them. It's just "Michiganers for Quality Education." That's the nonprofit board that is overseeing and governing the actual cyber school. So it's not a change really to any of their operations or anything like that. And they've actually been operating this way. They just recently, their legal counsel realized some of the match in some of their documentation. So they wanted to bring that to our attention to make sure we have the correct documentation here. And also, they would like to maintain a mailbox and the ability to meet at our central office. We talked about that originally, that was always the plan. They've gone back and forth on that. They've asked to amend section, schedule 7.8 of the charter contract to include a lease at $100 per month. For at least of the space of our mailbox within Oxford community and a potential meeting space that they don't expect to use often, but they would like access to within the community. So again, we originally okayed that, and then they pulled it off the table and they've asked for that. So all of those documents are there for you. I'm just here to give them questions, hopefully, and execute those in the near future.
Yep, so when you say that they would meet, they would meet here, so they would come like to the board office and like schedule through Angela and...
They would like the opportunity to do that because they're supposed to maintain a local office. They had an office in Troy. They would regularly meet, and that's where their operations are. But they're gonna maintain an office here. The laws aren't really written for cyber schools, but they want to just make sure that there's no holes in this whatsoever.
Any other questions for Jill Mon? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving to 6-8, building instruction, Mr. Weaver, the staff and parent survey feedback presentation.
Okay, back in June, I think it was, presented some of the building survey information. You've had two, this will be the third presentation, just to kind of show you what we've been doing with the different surveys. In the spring, to give you a little background, we give two surveys. One is attributed to the district level, which is mostly questions about the superintendent, board, cabinet-level positions and so forth. And then there's also a building-level survey that also goes out that we ask parents to supply feedback on. So there's two different surveys, so sometimes it gets a little confusing, realizing sometimes that there's exactly two surveys that go on. So this is, in June, we had gotten the results back. And this is the one you probably remember, some of these graphs that kind of compare the district to national averages. And at that point, you'd ask for some feedback from the buildings as to what they were seeing in the results specifically. Okay? In August, I came back again and kind of went over the district-level results. So now, today, I'm following back up with the building level and kind of explaining what some of the buildings have done. All of the buildings addressed their survey results with their staff. They went through different, what we call, thinking routines, from Cultures of Thinking, many of them. It's an instructional initiative that we're pushing through the district that we have. Many, three of our elementary is currently involved in. The other two will be going this year. And then as well, middle school and high school will be involved in the Cultures of Thinking initiative as well. And so, they have some moves in there that, it's from the book, Making Thinking Visible, that kind of some thinking routines that help people work through their thinking out loud so that you can see. So you're gonna be seeing it displayed in different formats as we go through. I'm just gonna basically let you look at it and read the data once again. This is the other survey data that we had as well. This is staff. And then you got the secondary student responses, and this is just kind of trying, hopefully, so you can kind of look at and see where we're at. And then we asked the buildings to do different presentations. So this is what Oxford Elementary School, they did, a See, Think, Wonder. I'm not gonna read all this to you, I'll let you kind of see, it's just blurbs. And when I get to the end of the slot, before I go on to the next, I'll just ask if you need any clarifications. So this is just kind of their feedback. So this is what they see in the data. Okay? And I really wouldn't wait for just giving you actual numbers, that gets a bit dry after a while. I'm already starting to get it as well. Yeah.
Question?
Yes.
Explain to me again, this is 43% of parents just read the teacher-related lessons to real life.
So what, where do the, is that from?
What are elementary parents see?
Say.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
So, and that, that is something that, that obviously, as they, they kind of go through this, you might see in the think and the wonders, like how they could possibly address that. Okay? I didn't put everything down, it would have been totally overwhelming. So I tried to kind of select different things and just give you a flavor, because that's kind of what you had asked for, I thought. So that's what I was trying to do.
Well, I just, I wanted to be sure that that's what I've stated yet.
Yeah, and if you have any clarifications beyond tonight, just email us, if you're on here, we'll pass them on. And then, so like this one here, so I tried to line them up a little bit. They all don't quite do that, but I did try to line up if you go across. So this is their wondering, is why do parents not see the connection? Because this is a major ten of IB. What do they gotta do to help communicate that? To make sure that parents are seeing some of these connections. But not all lessons can be a life lesson as well, too. So, just kind of give and take on everything. So, that was IB. Is there any questions?
I have a question about your former slide. Is it okay?
Oh, I guess, yes.
Sorry, I don't wanna go late for this at all, I just wanna know what your scale is. I just, I just wanna know, like...
Five.
2.0, okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify for all of us.
Yes, sorry, I should have, not everybody saw it. So thank you for clarifying that. So this is Daniel Ashford. They kind of look at it as the positives. And so these are some of the positives they saw here. Great staff, welcoming environment, sense of safety. So some of the things that they saw that areas for improvement is the way they looked at it. Better communication, maybe more parent-teacher conferences. They're not saying they're doing all of these things, but these are ideas that they had, that they wanted to put out there. Any questions? Claire Lake, did one called news. We started off with their worries. These are things that they saw that they were concerning to them throughout the survey. Their needs, kind of to inform parents better on the academic trends in the building and making sure they're aware of things that are going on. They were excited, although it wasn't directly mentioned in the survey, but they knew that with the family school liaison positions, that some of the issues that they were seeing in the survey would be addressed through that position. So they were very excited about that. And then here are some suggestions they had. And you can obviously read those. One of the issues that was a recurring theme was the number of parents that participated in the surveys. They were somewhat low for each building, because the district had quite a few responses. And so I think in the future, we probably wanna look at maybe sending them out at different times, because I think it's probably a lot for parents to go through, and they probably feel like, oh, I just filled this out.
I wanna touch base on the worries, the building maintenance. Do you know if that's building maintenance, the staff that's there? Or is it the condition, the condition of the building? You know, because we've obviously, last, you know.
I think it's...
Or is it just the maintenance of the overall?
Yeah, I think it's the overall cleanliness and condition of the building, I guess, is what I understood. This is, I only took the parent, by the way, I should mention, I only took parent. For elementary, it's only parents. And then for OMS and OHS, it's parents and students. I did not do staff feedback or anything like that. I just did the two that correlate to the data that you saw. Okay? Leonard did the same activity. Here were some of their worries, parking lot, air conditioning. Some of these things are gonna be addressed shortly. So that's one thing good to note in the bond. It's one of those things that you're hearing the parents are trying to address. Needs. Once again, you see this common thread in the elementarys with a little bit more clarification and communication with parents. It's a lot, because I've been telling you as an elementary parent in the district for four years, five years, you get a lot of communication. So, it gets a little overwhelming at times, and so sometimes I think there's also, maybe too much communication becomes too little at that point.
Well, the problem might come at this point, because for my kids, we had great school, we had our Friday folders, it was all hard time.
Right.
And so we were inundated with that, but now it's all electronic. So maybe people aren't getting, maybe that's a bad route to go.
Sometimes it is, it's easier to delete. And I think, you know, as we're working through this and trying to figure out, and I still know that from having kids in the district, many teachers still send quite a bit of information still home in the Friday folders as well, too. There's still being in use with the homework and stuff and that communication that goes back and forth. But it's primarily between teacher and parent, more so than building stuff. But yeah, it really becomes an issue, is maybe electronic, sometimes maybe not be the most effective. So any questions with Leonard's feedback? Other questions? Lakeville? And this was really hard, because to go through this, I know it's a lot, but I didn't wanna leave any building out. They all went through it, and I wanted to acknowledge all of their efforts, that they were going through the surveys and everything. So here are some of their worries. Once again, like I said, consistency of communication, understanding best practice, needs, more activities. Maybe survey the parents, I thought that was an interesting take on it, was maybe we need to kind of ask them a little bit more as to what they prefer. The parents. Parents felt it excites, they could really see that they were pleased with Lakeville, they felt it was a safe environment. And then here are their suggestions. Very level discussions, and some really good takeaways, and really good information for principals to kind of, to work into their school improvement plans and to develop and build off of. Because that's what this data is for. Not only is it for us to consider, but it's also to be used in school improvement plans and to be built on it as well, too. And also to the district-level improvement play as well. Now we're on to the middle school. The blue is the feedback on student surveys, and the black is feedback on parent surveys. So you're just looking at a few of these. You see this theme again, lack of real-life connections. One of the things we are doing at the middle school this year, and the high school is working on our IB program extensively, trying to make it even more robust and improving it. And so we hope to really build off of that, and we can see that that is a need that kids are seeing, you know, and want to see that connection more. So, we're looking at that. Students want more choices. Gotta read some of those. Parents not encouraged to volunteer, that was kind of the stat, the parent feedback was, you know, it's really hard, though, at the middle school with almost 1,100 kids, and trying to give parents all opportunities to participate and to have those. It's just a little bit different. And then you also have where the middle school kid doesn't necessarily want their child or their parent there, and so it's a, it's a tug-of-war on that one. And then here are some needs. Looking at like, when did they actually take the survey? Does that impact some of the responses? You know, what were the major events that occurred around here? Because sometimes those do factor into the survey. And then the same thing here, why large numbers of don't know concerning lessons relating to life? So there's that communication piece again, too, with parents, how to make that connection explicit for parents. And then, I thought this need right here to understand parent perception of lessons, also very insightful. Here's some excites. Students are confident, feel they could be better students. Overall feeling of respect between students and teachers. And then, as well, the overall parent rating is high. Families feel informed of OMS events and activities. As a parent of a middle school, I can tell you, Mrs. Beasley is quick to get those messages out on all the activities at the middle school. And then here's suggestions, trying to make the lessons more relevant and making sure those connections are there. And some of these I kind of shortened down a little bit for ease of reading. Increase, try to increase survey participation, making sure we're getting a better representation of everybody. Although statistically, we're in the ballpark of it being a good survey as far as they know. Increase, trying to also increase response rate, involve community in lessons and provide more opportunities. This is a really exciting one, if we, as we look forward with more of the Marshall Plan and CTE and really do it, working on this with the community, that is something to be really excited about as we move forward. MBE and the state are also moving forward in that area as well. Here, they did a See, Think, Wonder as well at the high school. Low participation sample size, need differentiated instructions. Staff and parents' results were similar, so I didn't, on this one, necessarily separate them out. They, they saw that everything was pretty close, and so they did it overall, and kind of mushed them together. They saw overall positive data. Once again, you can improve communication, I think, with Mrs. Gibson-Marshall this year. I think that has been addressed. She sends out a weekly parent newsletter, so if you have a child at the, at the high school, you are getting it. It is really nice, it's really concise and really, really well-done. All the activities, things that are coming up and everything else, and it really helps a ton. I know my wife is very appreciative of it. What they thinking, you can see some of that. Parents seem happy, feedback's not as timely. That has to do with academic and the classroom feedback. So they kind of, that hit home, that parents wanna see that timely feedback, that's important to them. And the need to improve academic support and feedback with 1,600 students, plus many of the OSEC kids sitting up in that high school. There is a large need for MTS us in making sure that you're meeting the needs, especially social-emotional needs. And that's one of the areas in which we're really striving this year, with the addition of the dean position. Mrs. Fine is fine, moving over into more of the social-emotional learning context and with the OVEAS program, and then also with the positive behavior programs you're trying to implement up at the high school. As that starts moving, we're hoping that that really helps support that, because that is very, very important at the high school level. And then you can see some of their wonderings. Is there any questions on the high school feedback? Here's OVAOSEC, they did theirs together. Very positive in academic, in rigor and personalization of curriculum, that personalization, which we would expect at OVA. Academic feedback, that's a recurring theme across. I think that's one area in which you can always give a lot of feedback to parents, and that is exactly how are the kids doing academically. And then also, you saw this here, which you would also, I think, expect in a virtual environment. They still wanna feel connected, and OVA has moved in this direction, trying to figure out how they can get them into the labs more. Also trying to run some clubs, especially at the lower levels for them, and trying to get them to feel more of that connection to that school environment as well, too. They don't wanna be, you know, they like the distance learning, but they also wanna feel that connection that you do with others as well, too. And that's important, that socialization. Many times, for schools, it's not just the education of the child, but also the socialization of the child. And here's OSEC's part. Low parent participation, program rated excellent by parents, strong customer satisfaction. Safety awareness is a concern for parents. This was not given too, too long after all of the issues last year and so forth. And cooperative learning opportunities need to increase. So once again, you see some of that socialization, and kids getting to work with each other, being important. Crossroads? This is an interesting survey. They have a hard time getting the survey to actually fit by including it anyways because of their population. Although they do have, as Guy pointed out, he had several parents come to their curriculum night. I think that's the first time in years that they've actually, I think the year before, they might have one, I think it was.
We're trending up.
We're trending upwards, as he says. So, that's really good. They do have with the day programs, a lot more, that program's really shifted over the last 10 years to where it's not so much adjudicated youth as it is a blending more. And so therefore, you do see more parents, and they're working with Mr. Cocassetta to have more of a parent outreach and communication with the parents as well, too. Any questions on crossroads? And here's Bridges. Bridges is, kind of falls in the same category. Low parent turnout makes some of the feedback a little bit difficult to interpret. She does give other surveys as well, too, Mrs. Van Loosen does. And a lot of her communication comes from one-on-one conversation with parents and so forth. And so I know that they went over this, and they're gonna be using this as part of her, it was in her school analysis of their data as well, too. And then areas for improvement as well, you can see at the bottom. And so, one thing I'm really proud of with Mrs. Van Loosen is you can really see her trying different things to try to get that. They also have a behavior piece this year that they put in place, and really trying to move forward in several areas and be courageous and take those steps out there, and trying to come up with an overall behavior plan and approach. And it's really, I think it's really, they're really starting to see some steps. And they put in an academic class that centers around some of those improvements as well, too. So, some really good things going on at Bridges as well, that are kind of the result of this as well, so. This is the MiFi survey, this is, this is the health survey they took in 7th grade. Since they had done this both 7th and 9th grade, we did not do the 11th grade this year. The middle school did the short form, the high school did the longer form, which has a little bit, strays into some areas that we don't feel 7th graders, we really wanna explore. So, short form is used at the middle school, and then the long form at the, at the high school. Administration and counselors primarily use this information. This helps with social-emotional learning, the needs of the kids, addressing risky behaviors that are happening. Also, it helps with the health curriculum as well, too. So I just wanted to kind of see some of the things that they read into the survey. And this kind of goes along. I did try to line up these bullets, so when I bring up the other sections, the bullets will kind of line up as to what they're, they're thinking and wonderings will line up in these areas. When you look at it, I mean, for the most part, overall, you got pretty good kids. I mean, the survey did come back and show that. They did also compare them to the county and the state averages as well, too. And I really thought under the wonder, the third bullet down, was insightful as well. There'd be lack in understanding of gender differences when it comes to learning. With a focus on universal design, that is an instructional focus they have. I sat in on one of the presentations, and it was done really well, on how do we make sure that our learning strategies and techniques reach all kids, not just a segment of kids. So they're really trying to work on it, and that is a bigger issue right now, even nationally as well, too, is that, you know, are we leaving the male student behind with some of our practices as well, too? And then on the other side of that, are we leaving the female student behind in some areas of math and science that they have just as much? And that's what all the research is coming out showing, is they are just as gifted. There is no real difference, there's not a, a male brain, a female brain. They're just as gifted as the, as the other sex at home and all the different areas, so. And it really tends, comes down to sometimes perception and also the interests of the child. And then, here are the findings for the 9th grade. And here are their wonderings. One of the biggest issues that you can see in the survey, or that wasn't addressed directly into the survey, was vaping. That is a huge issue at both the middle school and the high school. When I was a middle school principal, even just five years ago, there was a little bit of that on the, on the horizon. As a matter of fact, I think six years ago, it was like, what is this? What are people doing? And now it is becoming quite rampant, and it's one of the things that as you're talking, when you have conversations with your state legislators, they really need to start passing a little bit more, put more teeth into the laws and trying to clamp down on this abuse, because there's, not only cigarettes, but there's other ways of getting high and so forth. So vaping is a, is a real issue, as it is in all buildings. Okay? Any questions on any of this, Mrs. Gray?
Would all 7th and 9th graders be taking the survey because it was done during school?
Yes. So this is, everybody takes the survey, all 7th and 9th graders, nobody that has, has the health class, nobody takes it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from our board, Mr. Weaver?
On the entire presentation?
Yeah, on this presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, Mr. Weaver.
The common theme seemed to be small sample sizes. Were we, are we looking at any ways of getting more parents involved? Because we have, I mean, you say small, 20%, 30% of the parent...
I would say, depending on the building, it was anywhere from about 15% to 30% of the participants are the parents of that building. So obviously, with elementary, you're gonna have a much smaller parent size and so forth. So, none of the students, that's up to the administrators, because they have them as a captive audience, and usually we try to give it in a, in the school setting, in the classroom setting, and have the kids take it in that regard. And try to be as random and say, like, all the 7th grade English classes will take this. You know, we try to do that, so that we get a good sample of the kids. But the parent survey, I think it really has to do with the fact of probably sending the district survey out at the same time. And that's something I think I've learned from all of this, is pretty, is to give, like, do one one month, one the second month, so that they have enough time, because it is a lot of questions if you're going, especially since they're somewhat similar. So I would imagine parents thinking, I've already done this, I don't need to do this again. So, but it is important feedback, and that's one message I would give to parents that maybe in the audience are listening, is that this survey data is important for us to collect, and it's important for us to use, because we do use it for making decisions and understanding our own perception of the buildings from the community that we serve.
And then, second question. All the way up through the middle school, it seemed another common theme was the responsive bullying. If we looked into what are we doing, or actually panel some of the parents, why they're not coming forward with some of that, but yet put it on a survey?
Yeah, and some of that is too, I mean, I have to be honest, is you know, you know how much, we didn't put the data in as to how many people were actually filling that out? So that might have been even just one comment on the survey that, that, you know, that the teachers were commenting on. I just took the teacher's feedback. But as far as running programs, all the buildings, every single one of us runs OVEAS Anti-Bullying Program, which is a nationally-recognized, research-based bullying program. Mrs. Fine has helped support that. We use the Bully Busters from the high school to go down to the middle school to help reinforce that. The middle school still runs the advisory lessons, and they've approved them a ton. All of the buildings, like I said, have kickoffs and whatnot, and have celebrations of bullying. A lot of it, I will say to this, because there's so much attention given to this issue, that pretty much, I can remember from when I was principal, every issue comes down to bullying, then. And people don't have another word to kind of describe it, and they may have, you know, is that, has that interaction happened multiple times, or more than once at least? Well, no, if it happens once, that's not necessarily, unless it's, you know, for a really long program, for a long time, necessarily could be considered bullying, or it might be just a bad social interaction. As, you gotta remember, too, elementary, middle school, and even at the high school, these kids are learning how to interact appropriately. And even as adults, we have trouble sometimes interacting appropriately all the time. So, we gotta remember all of that, and so that was, comes in. But, one of the things I would say is, we also have the anti, or the outline, so I'm escaping me. Okay to say, there we go. Thank you as well, to the important anonymous, too. We got a couple of those in the last year or so. We put them all on the website, made sure it's publicized. Again, we had gotten away from that a little bit with all the things that we focus on, so there was an increased effort on that last year. One of the biggest pieces is gonna be those family school liaisons at the elementary. One of the, one of the main purposes they have is to look at the behavior of the kids, and then try, as to help the schools and the principals, because the principals ultimately are the ones that are responsible for the buildings, to help develop an approach, building-wide, to improve the overall behavior and the expectations for the children.
And then my, my last one, it's more pointing, you were talking about the OSEC-OVA, kind of joining and feeling part of the high school. One question that I, that I asked last year was... One question that I, that I asked last year was, a couple of times a year, the leader puts out something with all of the honor roll students from the high school, but they don't want to be OSEC students. And while that's a small thing, it's a big thing. A lot of kids see their name in the paper. Is that something you can look into?
Yeah, and really it's the, it's the Oxford leader that reaches out to us to kind of ask for that. It's probably just been an oversight because all of the buildings that have any type of recognition like that at the quarter or the semester should be getting recognized. So we can work with that. Mrs. Stubalinski will give me the high sign, will work with that and make sure that that happens. Mrs. Shallow is here, we'll make sure.
There's already been a discussion, it will occur this next round.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Very good back, there you go.
Anything else for Mr. Weaver on this topic? Great. Mr. Weaver also got a dropout recovery program?
Yeah. Oh gosh. Last week, Mrs. Sweetnight met with a gentleman from a company called Graduation Alliance. Mrs. Lamond, there you are, had set up, if we had gotten in contact with the company, Mrs. Lamond had set up a, a meeting with them. Unfortunately, she, she had a six child, who seems all better now, but, and could not be there for that meeting. And so we met with Graduation Alliance and talked with them and what Graduation Alliance is, is a dropout recovery program. They take a list of students that have dropped out of your school or are at risk of dropping out like severely, because we also have Bridges as an alternative as well too. And they work with getting those kids back in or working with giving them an opportunity to continue their schooling and graduating. So we are going to go forward with a contract with this company. It doesn't interfere with what OVA does, doesn't interfere with Bridges, Crossroads or anything. And we're going to enter into a contract with, unless you have some concerns, to partner with them. We give them the names, they go out, they find the children and give them an opportunity to continue their, their education and get their diploma. We will, we haven't talked with Mr. Cococetta yet, but we will be using Crossroads as the school. We will be using Crossroads as the school to do this and if the secondary principals next, secondary principals will be learning with this opportunity as well too. With the, the Graduation Alliance, there's a lot of procedures in place, like you have to get monthly, they've got to be showing progress. They have a really neat program, they go out, it's an online school, but you know, they do the same thing, they have to supply the computer and that, but they really go in and they work specifically with this child. They're very successful, they're a national company, they work with several districts throughout Oakland County. For example, Birmingham, Brandon, Austin, Farmington, Ferndale, Huron, Pontiac, Southfield, Troy, Wald Lake, Waterford and West Bloomfield have already established partnerships with them. So we are going to try to see if we can get this to work. We figure it's an opportunity. They will do, like I said, the legwork, the most important part is reaching out to that child and making them understand that they still have an opportunity to finish their diploma. And then they also do the legwork of trying to meet with that child and trying to bring them back into the educational world. And they meet with them, they, the partners at like monthly and then the child's got to show progress as they do the curriculum as well too. And they've been very successful, so we are anxious or eager to be able to offer this opportunity for our children that have not successfully completed the diploma requirements for option.
Can you discuss the financing, the costs?
There's really no cost, it's really just a pass through. We get the FTE, most of the FTE, about 95% of it, 95% of it goes onto the company because there's quite a bit of cost. You imagine employing somebody to do all of this. It's the same setup as all these other districts have. I believe we get about, it's about $100 per kid, but that's not why we're doing it. It's really just the, probably that will even cover maybe two current costs and stuff. So, but it really is about giving these kids an opportunity and the FTE goes to support the activities of the company at that point, so. And like I said, we'll be looking at a tiered intervention in the fact that, you know, we've got Bridges as well and other opportunities and we have OVA as well for other opportunities, but this is for the, the harder cases, so.
Do you have an idea like in 2017, 18, how many students this program may be able to reach out to?
Oh, what did we say?
I think Farmington had like 80 students.
Yeah.
I bet someone that's six out of nine.
For honestly, it would probably be about 16 to 18.
About no more than 20 students.
Yeah, it depends on where we draw the line as far as at risk of graduating, because there's several different categories of dropouts and one of, that fit into that category, was it 23A funding? And then there's one that says at risk of not graduating. So these would be the severely deficient children that we would like to give that opportunity, that for whatever reason, the distractions, the environment, the, the support, the non-support, whatever it is, the parent environment, the, the high school or Bridges or Crossroads or wherever they're at, is not, OVA is not working out. So it's really for those kids, children that are a little bit harder cases.
Any other questions to Mr. Weaver? Should we go, Sandra?
Who handles the curriculum is my concern, is it our curriculum?
It is going to be, the companies get the curriculum, they have developed it, they have taken it because what they've realized, and I agree with them, is that men, trying to cover the benchmarks at that reading level, maybe these children have reading issues. And so they take the reading curriculum and they make it at a like SIA level, that's a reading level, at their level, so that they're able to access the curriculum. And so they really were tied to it. And they also do have some piercing classes as well at Grant Point, they mentioned as well too.
Do they get an Oxford diploma or is it from?
They will be getting an Oxford diploma through Crossroads.
Any more questions for Mr. Weaver?
If you've got a question.
My question's live and cockery.
So if you have any concerns, please voice them to us at all and we'll move on.
Forward to your conference, thank you for researching this. I'll like to use it now, thank you. Looking at finance and operations, Mr. Barna, safety update.
Good evening, everyone. So in your board packet, I have four points of my safety update for this evening. Just wanted to give everyone an update on the Alice training for substitutes as it relates to web-based training. That was actually launched for the substitutes through PCMI on October the first and we gave substitutes through PCMI a deadline of October 31st to complete their training. In addition to that, our food service staff, our employee staff will be taking actual live training, they've already obviously performed the web-based training, they'll be taking the, the live training scenarios at Oxford Middle School on October the 23rd. I also wanted to mention the training for students. We actually have a meeting set up for next Thursday internally with key stakeholders to talk about a cohesive approach to training students, so disseminating information for active shooters age appropriately to our students. And so we, we want a cohesive approach and so therefore we're going to be gathering next Thursday to discuss how we're going to go about doing that and when. And quite frankly, it should be sooner rather than later. So, just wanted to mention that. In addition to that, I wanted to let everyone know that we are updating, we have updated, we're continuously updating and refining our Oxford Schools Emergency Operation Plan. So it's a district-wide EOP and we're just scouring it right now because the changes that we make in here, obviously will get down to a very finite level, including the safety manuals that are located each of the classrooms at all of our schools. So just want everyone to have a heads up that we've been working on that and we're continuously working on that. So that's where we're at on that point. We also have several individuals within the district that will be attending basically a student threat assessment workshop. And so this is from the psychological aspect of student safety and security. And so we have several individuals, I believe, for each of the schools, including several psychologists and social workers will be attending as well from the district to learn more about how we can help students in regards to the threat assessment component, so. Does everyone have any questions?
I just have a couple. First of all, I just appreciate the partnership that we have with the local county sheriff's department. Just so impressive how you were able to reach out to those resources. I see comments over and over again from our staff about how well prepared they feel and it's because of that live feeling that they've provided us. Can you talk a little bit more about the students? I know, I'm not sure if you practiced like a code yellow yet or students are gonna be barricaded in the room. Have we taught, have we gone through a practice yet with the students?
So, yeah, obviously each, each school goes through their, their regular lockdown drills. And so that has already occurred, you know, according to their each school's schedule. What these, what these are, Alex, as you're well aware, up in Troy as well, I'm sure, what we haven't done yet is practice these drills with any students.
That's what I've.
And so quite frankly, this discussion that we're going to have next week, we'll delve into that because obviously at OMS and at OHS, we'll be discussing the level of that live training. And will it be live training or will it simply be a lesson plan that is shared with the students? So we want to ensure that what we do is obviously cohesive depending on the age, okay?
Appreciate that thought, absolutely. Delirium. You know, it could be alarming for a kindergartner to start barricading themselves in the room without a lot of work.
Absolutely.
Probably the daddy teachers, so. And just the opposite, I worry about 12th graders who would get actively engaged in it. So again, I appreciate the thoughtful response.
And I hate to, I hate to make light of that, but at the same time, we definitely would welcome that if that was indeed a true emergency, so absolutely.
That's great. Any other questions for Mr. Barna, Ms. Guthrie?
Thank you. So you mentioned the internal meeting that you're having, just talk a little bit about it. Do we have the external resources that we can lean on to try to help guide us in what has worked before or is there anyone that we're pulling into that internal conversation?
We are, we're, we're involving Jace and Laura, our, our, obviously, so we're kind of sure.
Oh, the county sheriff's office, okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, good question.
I'm sorry, I miss your topic.
Thank you. Mr. Barna, as you were talking about your EOP, was it?
Yes, Emergency Operation Plan, it is our EOP, not mine.
Our, okay, but that's it there, is that the document there?
It is, it is.
So my concern is, you're complete, you're constantly revisiting it, scouring it, cleaning it up, changing it.
We are, we are.
How does that get disseminated so that everybody knows that?
So it's a plan that is the overall overreaching plan that gets disseminated in these books and I briefly mentioned that go into, in a more finite level, each of the group.
Let me fine, fine tune my question. Is there going to be instruction on that to the teachers or are they just going to be expected to have read it? Are they going to be like in the movies, okay, we gotta do something, how does this get out there? It work?
There will be a review at the building level of that, that directive.
Okay, so once this thing gets finalized, then everybody?
The changes that will transpire from the larger document that are directed at each building will be finalized and shared with each of the players, each of the teachers and staff. It's not just teachers obviously, but it's.
Right, yeah.
Correct, yes. Great question.
Mr. Finnis?
At a couple of the PTO meetings, they were talking about the Alice training and one of the topics that came up is, and I don't know the exact term, they were talking about these safety buckets which have a bunch of supplies, things like that. And they were, one of the questions was, is that something the district is going to do or can some of the parents start donating for these or is that, any information on it?
Oh, it is absolutely. When, when everyone takes the Alice training, whether it be online or specifically as online, because they do go into the recommended components of a Go Bucket, it's called, the actual Go Bucket. And really a Go Bucket is used primarily in lockdown types of situations where tragedy occurs within the building and you obviously are locking down a place within that particular room. And so, we're going to be discussing, not at next week's meeting, but at our safety committee meeting that I have each year, which I plan on, I haven't actually put that together yet. But we're going to talk about whether we're going to be looking at supplying it at a district-wide level or whether we could take either donations to try to obviously get the funding. Because again, a bucket isn't relatively expensive obviously, but when you look at supplying all the classrooms that we have throughout the district, depending on what's in those buckets, it, it can be quite pricey. So we'll have to look at talking about it as a group and deciding what we will do going forward. But that's a great question as well because that, that question did come up amongst our staff when we had the live drills and that's a great question.
Thank you for your work, Mr. Barna.
Thank you very much.
I don't need that kind of assessment for special education.
Yes, so what you have in front of you is a late edition, but just a discussion item to talk about this actual talent assessment. It's actually the Practical Assessment Exploration System and it's from a company called Talent Assessment Incorporated for special education. Specifically, it would be provided through our IDEA funding. And so I know that Denise has some more specific information in regards to this, this actual exploration system because it involves many components and involves some physical components as well.
So Oakland Schools has offered additional IDEA funding for every state, every district in Oakland County to open up a transition lab. And so the lab would be at the high school for cognitively impaired students and it's exploring job opportunities, job skills, vocational training for students that are on a certificate of completion track. It's a very expensive lab and most districts do not have them just due to the cost and the training involved with them. So Oakland Schools has offered statewide IDEA funding for each district to open up a lab. So we're very excited for the opportunity because it was something that we just could not afford without support from Oakland Schools. So they will, they, the funding will flow through us. The IDEA funding came from Oakland Schools to the district and we purchased the lab. Mr. Wolf gave us a classroom at the high school because you need an entire classroom. It's a work-study lab for significantly impaired students. So we're very excited for the opportunity and I just think it's over the threshold of purchasing, so it needs to come to you, but it's really funding that's coming from Oakland Schools.
So it's a pass through?
Yes.
Rich, I think you're working so hard for Oakland Schools to make this available to our kids.
Does this cover our law students as well?
Yes, it will be the law students, the high school students with cognitive impairments, students that are maybe significantly learning disabled, that may not be college-bound. We're also working on a plan to have our middle school students come to the high school weekly, monthly, I'm not quite sure how we would work that out because then it becomes field trip, transportation, but providing access for middle school students as well. I know that we're just here informing you tonight and then voting next week, but all districts in Oakland County are jumping on this, so if I could possibly have a motion tonight, I could get to the top of the list. There is training that's involved, the longer I wait, the farther down the list I am in Oakland County.
Sure, are there any confirmations?
No, it will be, each teacher will, will bring their students to the lab on a regular basis, so I will not be hugging Pace Lab para pros. The law students, the para pros will come. Both of my CI classrooms here at the high school have para pros associated with them as well.
More discussion, Mr. Weaver?
Is this a one-time license or is this a per year?
It's one time.
It's a one-time?
Yes.
Two questions. Number one, how's it fit in the schedule, daily scheduling? Do we have any scheduling that needs to be moved around for any students?
No, the, the lab will be in a classroom that Mr. Wolf has given to the students, to this lab. And then let's just say the law students, maybe a para pro would bring two or three students down to the lab, work on activities, work on skills, go back, bring other students. We would have a schedule set up between the, the law program and the two CI classrooms as to rotating those students and staff through and then also providing opportunity for middle school.
And then, second question, is there a cutoff that the state will say, okay, we've done 50 schools, that's all we're gonna do?
November 1st.
So it's a date, so.
We have to, we have to.
It's not a school, it's not a total amount of schools, you just have to respond by a certain date.
So back in June, I had to respond to Oakland Schools that I was interested in the funding and the lab and then we kept it purchased. It was originally October 1st that we had to purchase by, but then the IDEA funding was delayed, there were some glitches along the way with Oakland Schools in the state, so they pushed back the date until November 1st. So I, if I don't purchase by November 1st, we, they, Oakland Schools won't.
I'd just, also.
And then financial question, we've already discussed, it's a pass through, so the money comes into the district from the state or from the county?
From the county.
And then we go ahead and we pay this company talent assessment? And then we go ahead and we pay this company talent assessment?
That's right.
And then I provide copies of the purchase order that this is indeed what I spent the funding for back to Oakland Schools.
I would like to make a motion to approve the $25,671 and $0.10 purchase for the Practical Assessment Exploration Second Edition. Is there a second? Can we have some more discussion, or anything else you want to come up? I think he was ready for a second. Any other discussion?
No, those are...
Support?
Support.
Any opposed?
Wait, no.
Oh, sorry. A vote? Voting? Proved? Vote, yes.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, motion passed.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to thank Steve for providing the classroom. And we're very excited.
Would we like to tour? Do we love to tour with the students?
When you're at the high school, we're gonna purchase. We have, there's two days of training set up to train staff. So when we're all set up and operational, what we're gonna do for it to work.
Very wonderful.
Thank you.
Mr. Cass, anything to do with resources tonight?
Just a couple of quick updates. Tomorrow, we have invited three great candidates for our orchestra program to come back and teach a lesson for us. So we're very pleased to have found three quality individuals. So we've got a group of our teachers and administrators who will be observing them tomorrow. And then we've also got some interviews taking place. We're interviewing three candidates, long-term sub-replacements for Amy Wu for the Oxford Elementary Chinese Program. So we're also interviewing them tomorrow afternoon. So we hope to have a recommendation for you during next meeting.
Any questions from the board for Dave? Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Who's our Dave?
We haven't anticipated a higher date. This can be, you know, we interview all three and we hope to have somebody within a week or two weeks after, I'm assuming they're somewhere else right now.
Yes, yeah. So we're gonna have to work with a candidate. Obviously, this is a difficult position for us to fill. And anyone that we might recommend from another district, we're gonna have to give them a reasonable amount of time. So we're anticipating at least a couple of weeks out before we can have someone start that position.
Thank you. Moving down to item 9, Student Services, Mrs. Sweet?
I believe in your board pack, you have a memo for schools of choice for second semester of this school year. It would be the same as in the past, recommending kindergarten through 9th grade unlimited and then 6th through 11th unlimited at the Virtual Academy for all kinds of students. So I think that's in your board pack and no rush. You can vote next week if you have any, if you have any questions, you can contact us, Mr. Barna.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one other thing.
Absolutely.
Count day?
I was gonna remind you of that one.
Count day was last Wednesday. Again, just to remind everybody that preliminary numbers are preliminary numbers now. Then they move to an audit in February. And then we get the final audited numbers in April. So the numbers I'm sharing tonight will not be finalized until April. But it looks like we have an increase of about 300 FTE. So our preliminary FTE count is 65, 14, 20, 20, S T U's. So that's about 300 FTE.
Can you share where that growth is coming from, Mrs. Sweet?
When I look at it, it's coming from the Oxford Virtual Academy. It's coming from the shared time programs. The high school has increased enrollment as well, mainly from the Mississauga programs.
Thank you for that update.
Yeah.
I also just wanted to clarify before we move to item 10. On our agenda, item four, the pre-arranged request to address the board, those topics have to be approved three days prior to a meeting. So that's why there was nothing under the pre-arranged this time. So at this point, we're gonna move to unscheduled audience participation. And once again, individuals are welcome to speak for five minutes during this public participation section. And as for signups, obviously, we made the speakers ready to meet and I will address as I can. And we have two people. Could you be our timer, should we decide if we have a few minutes?
Sure.
So if you could please, if you don't like coming up to the front so we can just see who you are. We have Kelly Rosner. Kelly, could you come forward?
Where am I supposed to speak from?
You can speak wherever you wish. I'm just gonna be on camera. You're here. I just wanted to make sure we can hear you, but that's fine.
But not over my head. I was confused because the agenda says on that first part, if you wanted to speak on an agenda item, that's under item four. And it says you can only speak on an agenda item. And then you have item 10 here, which is to speak about everything. So it's, this is very confusing because I wanted to speak on an agenda item and then I also wanted to speak for something that was not on the agenda. So just to clarify that in fairness, it's very confusing for the user of that. I do understand being a board member is difficult. I've been on a board for 24 years and I know there's issues that you deal with. But I do not, one thing that is important with the board is checking your facts and understanding your responsibilities as public servants. And comments were made at the last board meeting that were quite shocking to me. There was inferences, they're actually outright statements that I'm responsible for 200 to 300 FOIAs. I wrote less than 20 FOIAs. Many of the FOIAs I wrote were for simply asking for things like the agenda. If I could get the meeting packet in advance of your board meeting so I could understand what was going on, if I had any questions, I could forward them to you. But I don't get those. The response I got from the district is that you want to charge me $31 to see the same information that you see prior to the board meeting. And I'm only asking to have it on the website or available to the citizens so that we all can be involved in the school. Because possibly there's information from the public that they might want to add and share with you before the meeting that might help you with your information. One of the other things that was said was that I wrote a letter or I somehow reported you for having a boarding school. I did no such thing. I think that you really need to check your facts before you make public statements. I never once said Oxford Schools had a boarding school. Never once, not once. As a matter of fact, when I found out after the meeting what was said, I called the state and I said, what's going on? I asked for the information that you had from you. I did not get it. I did get one through the state, the letter that was sent to you, and they made a mistake. The conversations I had with the state were regarding an entirely different school district. Had nothing to do with Oxford. So the state immediately corrected their statement. And they emailed you a correction, which was over a week and a half ago. I still haven't had anyone from the district to reach out to me and say, we made a mistake. We identified you, we realized later that it wasn't you. You shouldn't have made those statements in public without me being present. I talked to Superintendent Throne just yesterday. And I said, if you knew my name was on that letter and you were going to read that letter at this meeting, I'm talking about the last board meeting, you should have emailed me and said, there's a letter with your name on it and it's on, it's gonna be on the agenda tonight, to give me an opportunity to be here. So instead of all of that inflammatory words that were going on, I could have said, whoa, 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 I didn't do it. That would have just stopped everything. I think we really need to work harder to be good stewards of this school district and work together and understand that, you know, not everyone's gonna agree with your opinion. But people asking for information and seeking knowledge about your programs is a good thing. No citizen should ever be ridiculed. If they did contact the state authorities, if they were concerned about something at the school, you've set a precedent that you're gonna identify them publicly and chastise them. When in fact, that could save a child's life or that could change the outcome of something that was a dangerous situation with a teacher or administrator. You should never, never do what you did. That chills the atmosphere for somebody reporting something that could be inappropriate. And as administrators of this school district, you should understand the importance of that. I had a couple just general questions. I know with the Lighthouse Academy, I was wondering what the actual FTE was this year. I know we were promised 200 or more. I've heard the numbers were substantially lower than that. I don't know if there's a report that was given, you can't hear a lot from back here. Also, are you gonna address the low numbers of the OBA? Couple more questions on that. And, you know, I know we're still advertising on our district website that we have a full international program. You've, you know, international counselor, international student services director. But we have one F1 student. And you keep calling them an exchange student when you darn, you know darn well they're not exchange students. Exchange students are J visa, these are an F visa. These are simply students here on a visa to be educated. They're using our tax funds, that's wrong. They shouldn't be, they should be paying their full amount. But you continue to call them exchange students when they're not. You're calling them the wrong name and I really appreciate, you know that, to use the correct name. I am all for exchange students, J visa students. It's a regulated program, you're only allowed to have five per school. And you can't make money off it, it has to be dealt with through the State Department. It's a great program. It's a true cultural exchange. Sure, I'm just letting you know, that's a true cultural exchange. The F visa is just simply a student visa. They're here to be educated, they go to college, they compete against our kids, they bring their technology back to their country. It's not a good thing. Thank you.
The other person who requested to speak to the board is Bruce Myers.
Okay.
Item number 11, you have 11A follow-up letter from the state for education, Mr. Throne?
Yes, so just so happened, just like, I'm sorry, at our last board meeting, I did not receive anything else from the state. And I did receive an additional follow-up letter in the mail that the district received yesterday. And so I would like to read that at this time. The letter is made out to Dear Ms. Rosner, Michigan Department of Education is in receipt of your October 1st, 2018 email requesting a correction of the record as it pertains to an Oxford Community Schools letter dated September 17th, 2018 and querying about whether the district may be operating a boarding school. Your name was referenced in that letter as the person presenting the issue. Due to misinterpretation of information provided in your original telephone call to Ken McLash, the following correction is being provided. One, you are representing Team 20 and specifically around seeing the Anchor Bay School District and whether that district may be operating a boarding school. And two, the reference concerning Oxford Community Schools pertaining to safeguards and regulations for placement of foreign students into people's homes or other entities within the community. And so I just, again, want to share that letter with the board.
Thank you. There are several scheduled activities for the board to see. And at this time, we will have final board comments. Can we start with Mr. Bailey?
Just a couple. I do like the weekly newsletter that you send out as a parent. That really is very informative. As a parent, I appreciate that information. And then as far as like the survey, I would love to see if we can get more parents involved in that, you know, well over 50. I know we talked about it in several of the PTO meetings over the last few weeks. I know they're trying to get the parents more engaged in that, so. That's all I have.
Mrs. Guthrie?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank all of our presenters tonight, Mr. Lamond, Mr. Weaver, and the cabinet for great information presented. And I do agree that the surveys, we talked about having, at one point, having a competitive pizza party opportunity. Maybe something creative like that to get more surveys. I don't know much what would work with parents if pizza were cheaper.
I'd throw it out for sure.
So just to echo Mr. Bailey's suggestion. But thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Stubbitt?
I'm real excited to see this lab. And it really has a great idea and really shows our commitment to everybody. So I'm excited for that. Thanks, Mr. Weaver, for all the information tonight, appreciate that. And everybody else that, Sam, everybody in jail, thank you, everybody. Good information tonight.
Mr. Stubbitt?
Couple things, very excited to hear about the program for the special education. I think it sounds like a real opportunity for us to finally really involve the loft program at a higher level, which I have always thought was something that we needed to focus on. That's kind of an age group that seems to get left out quite a bit. It's an 18 to 26th age group of special education people that are still part of our community. And I think that having the opportunity for them to continue their education and get life skills, because that's what they're gonna need. Their parents will not always be here to help them. And as a parent of a special needs kid, that is just a huge worry that what life skills they'll be able to pick up from other people besides you. So I think that's great. I also wanted to thank Guy. I went out to Crossroads this week and spent, took up a lot of his time. But I really wonder if everybody knows what we've got out there. And I, I don't know that we, I don't know that we do them justice and I don't know that we, our staff, I don't know that our administrators are aware of what's going on out there. So it's the safety, the psychological, the emotional support, the physical support, the food, the clothing, like they're providing such a different piece to these children that education is kind of, you know, down on the list. I just, I hope that people in our community, I think we could maybe do a better job. And, you know, I would like to take this on as something I can help them to do a better idea to find out what they need from us and how we can incorporate them into our program, whether it be Oxford Gisbeak or another way to support our own people. These are massively at-risk children. And these teachers are literally saving their lives. And Guy is just the band-aid that's holding it all together out there. So thank you for having me out. I hope all the board members visit places like that, in Bridges. You know, they had me out last year too. I went and spent time there and talked to parents, I talked to kids, I talked to her. Just these alternative programs that we have, the loft, the Bridges, the Crossroads. I just, every board member should have a tour. Every board member should know who is working out there and what they're doing. The administrative staff should all know. Those people should really kind of be at the top of our list, I think. So I just kind of wanted to shed a little bit of light to that and I'll end it on that.
Thank you. Ms. George Stubbitt?
Ken, thanks for the information and the data that you presented. You know, the information gives us a snapshot, a snapshot in time. And really, what we do with that snapshot in time is the important thing. Do we just take that information and say, okay, I think we've got this, 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 and this to address? Or do we really throw it in and say, where are our major opportunities within the district? What are repeating themselves? You know, because we always look at, as students move along, you know, what is the 5th grade class today? What do their scores look like as 6th graders? And what are those 6th grade numbers looking at when they're 7th grade? What are those, are we addressing those issues? So we're not seeing them from 5th grade and then they're moving to the middle school and it's that 6th graders and 7th graders and then all the way through. What do we, what are we going to do with that information to say, okay, these are the things that we've identified, these are the things that we need help? And I commend everybody in the district for taking the time, even though it's a small sample size, you have to start someplace. You have to look at where you're at, you have to make a change. And then when those changes get made, more people get involved. Those are important steps to take. You don't build a world-class district overnight. I'm proud to say that we've made a lot of changes in the last four years and making some progress so that we can be the district that we want to be. It's gonna take us some time to get there. But as I said to Tim the other day, don't flinch, just keep moving and keep doing what's... flinch, just keep moving and keep doing what's right. So in that regards, I want to just not only thank you, but thank the parents and the students that took the time and the effort. As far as what's going on at Crossroads, it's a big Band-Aid right there. This guy, I think he's probably talking...
Oh, that's a little bit of weight.
I know. But I would tell you, he brings a lot of energy to those kids, and that's what our students out there at Crossroads need. We need as much love and attention that we can possibly give them. Same thing over at Bridges. You all, you all, you don't fall into the big, you don't fall into the highlights, but you fall into the big umbrella, and what you all do is amazing. Because not every student is at the level, every student's not at the same level, and we give every student every opportunity to succeed. And whatever that success looks like for them, right? It could be, I'm going to, I just, I'm gonna graduate and I'm gonna go on to the workforce. That's great. Or I'm gonna graduate and I'm gonna go on to a community college, or I'm gonna graduate and I'm gonna go on to a four-year college. We have to look at this as a way to reach as many students as we can. So, and that's why I'm really proud of this. Thanks for bringing this to us. It's just one of those things that shows our community that everybody matters. And, you know, at our kickoff meeting, Tim brought up, Timo, everybody matters, and everybody plays a part and role. You know, as far as what was brought up earlier and community comments, we react sometimes to letters that we get from the state, and that's, that's what we're given. That's the information that we are given, that we got it the day of, looked at it. I don't apologize for my comments, I don't think that I needed to. I think the apology needs to come from the state.
Thank you. I think the overall message for me tonight was all means all, like over and over again. I think we really see how we're reaching all students, all staff, and I appreciate that message. Also great to hear, you know, 300 more FTEs over the town with OVA and shared time. So again, we think of all means all. Those kids do not traditionally fit or want the traditional K-12 environment in a seated situation. And the fact that we're able to meet those needs for those kids is beyond what we get FTE-wise and money-wise. We're really serving a huge niche in our area, so I think we're much to be proud of with OVA and that shared time program. And again, thank you for your patience while I presided during this meeting. Thank you for all your patience and our appreciation. And I'd like to also ask Mr. Throne, any other comments?
I do, I think I'd just like to add one comment, and she's probably gonna hate me for this, but I would like, this is the set, please stand up and come down here. Come down.
Yes.
New me at all.
So I have the, I have the pleasure of letting everyone know that Oxford's very own campus that has been named as the School Nutrition Association of Michigan 2018 Director of the Year. So if I understand correctly too, Karen's gonna be honored in a couple of weeks at the State of Michigan, and she will also automatically be entered into the National Food Service Director of the Year. So congratulations.
It's just great having the support of this board and all the university students and everyone, and I could not have that award without having a great staff. Because, because of them, it's easier to do my job. So I'm just thankful for that.
Remember, I have, before we begin, we have a motion to move into closed session. Could someone make that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a... Braden Braisington, it was clarified to me today that we need to do a roll combo when we go into the closed session.
Absolutely. So do I have a motion for, Ms. Goffler?
Move to meet closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8D, to consider the purchase or lease of real property, but only until the time of an option to purchase or lease a real property is obtained.
Support? Mr. Bailey? Discussion? Ms. Stupick, could you please take attention from the floor?
Certainly. Pastor Goffler?
Aye.
Trustee Bailey?
Aye.
Plz, President Braisington?
Aye.
Trustee Stupick, aye. Trustee Schaefer?
Aye.
Trustee Delzado?
Aye.
Based on our six-person vote, we will be moving into closed session. This does conclude our meeting. Board, if we could just sort of stay right here, we'll have the audience leave, and we will start our closed session at 7:51. So we'll speed up. No breaks, we're gonna keep going, so 7:51.